Let's call a meeting to order at 6:31. We'll start with the invocation and the pledge. Eternal God, I pray that you bless us in this meeting and keep us. Lord, make your face shine on us and be gracious to us. I pray that we feel your presence during this meeting because you are with us wherever we go. I pray that this meeting focuses upon you and your plans for us as a body of believers. Let our actions in this meeting be valuable to our aim, which is to build up and edify one another in our city. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. That brings aside three on our agenda, public comments. Kristy Smith.
Me. Kristy Smith, 36630 Canyon Road. So I came here to, of course, introduce you all to Simon, little celebrity dog of Simonton. Nine months to catch. His little friend that was dumped with him unfortunately didn't make it, but he's a little survivor and he's pretty healthy for street savvy for nine months. Just a couple of things I want to address with the council. It's council, it's POA, it's the crazy hodgepodge of Valley Lodge in some of our, even our city right now. But I got a call from my neighbor that he was going to build a seven-foot privacy fence and it was approved by the Architectural Control Committee of Valley Lodge. Well, you know me, I'm going to lose my total crap because I didn't buy in this neighborhood to have privacy fences like Katie and Sherilyn have everywhere. I bought in this neighborhood because it was an open fencing community and the more we flooded, the more I became experienced with why there's no privacy allowed in our neighborhood, which is in the FEMA bylaws, a privacy fence obstructs water flow and can basically impede and affect your neighbor around you and can also basically make national floodplain come out and tell you that because of that privacy fence they're blocking water flow, your house and your property is now uninsurable. And in the FEMA standards, it also says that privacy fences have to be built at your city's base flood elevation. So can you imagine we start privacy fences at 116 elevation? So we're going to start them at six feet in the air. That doesn't make sense. That's why we have ladder-back fences, chain link, wrought iron. So privacy fences, we should not even see. Through my experience of being on the POA, two privacy fences in our complete neighborhood were approved and it was Kevin Mallow and Sherry Bux. They're both partial fences. One's a bamboo, one's a privacy, no longer than that wall, but basically giving privacy to their pool. So as a city, we can also see that other people have obstructed privacy fences illegally because they wake up one morning and decide to do them. So maybe as a city, we can get on them and say, "Look, you have to remove this or you have to cut out the bottom three feet or you have to put something." Because when people wake up and put sheds under power lines or utility easements and don't get permission or the city permit, it affects all of us where FEMA can say, "You're no longer insurable. You're all not following ordinance. You're all not following the FEMA floodplain standards and you're in a floodplain." So that shed that's not mounted to the ground can float into your neighbor's house. So if we can all be mindful, if you see neighbors do things illegally or just start calling and go crazy, or just let them know. I mean, I just saw another shed go up and it's literally seven feet from the main utility line. So the problem is, it's the first thing you see in the neighborhood and it's literally... So the utility, if that pole goes down those transformers, the utility workers are now blocked because a shed is placed too close to the utility easement that it's not supposed to be on. It's 18 feet on pony and wagon. All ladder-back streets, each property is nine feet at the back of your property. Nothing should be placed on it. No trees, no sheds, no nothing. In section one is 18 feet. So that's like, it's not brain rocket science. So that's my piece. So whatever we can do as a city, I'm going to actually be driving the neighborhood and make some notes and I'll get with y'all and the POA and the ACC. It's the only way we're going to make a difference in this neighborhood is to get people to remove things that they do without permission. Thank you all.
All right, we don't have any other public comments. Moving on to item four, consider and take action on the consent agenda.
Hold on just one second.
The item A, the minutes of June 17th are not in the packet, so we will remove that item for a future meeting. The monthly payment report on item D and the monthly revenue and expense report on item E, I would like to move those to a future meeting one more time and make an offer that Julie is going to meet with Eric next week on the 14th. Anyone who would like to also attend and learn more about those reports, how they're made, how to read them. Reports won't change, but the understanding or kind of having an information session, if any of the council members would like to do that, let us know. And we'll bring this back after we've had more discussion about the reports and make sure that we're, have all the information readily available.
Is there a timestamp?
Yes.
Is there a timestamp?
Yes. I have to check my phone.
I was going to say, I know she told me the 14th, but I don't know.
Yes, it was the 14th. Oh, she said noon.
Oh, at noon.
Yeah, I asked if she was going to provide lunch. She didn't answer.
I guess we just need to make sure there's not too many council members.
Well, we'll just post, we'll just post for a possible forum if y'all would like to do that. And if we need to do an additional session, she, we're happy to schedule that if noon doesn't work or whoever is interested in going.
Can I comment on that?
Comment on?
On what you just said. Add to it.
There could be an additional session or not.
No, 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 no. I spent time with Julie and it was very informative and she created for me a diagram of payments and all kinds of stuff is made. It's an exact presentation that should be made to any new council member when they come on, because a lot of the questions that we should have or had could be explained in a way that you kind of go, "Okay, so now I need to know this or that." So I'd recommend that maybe Julie, after we have this next meeting, can create something that would help educate the uneducated.
Sounds great. Thanks for the compliment. I will pass it along to her, too. All right, so that leaves items B and C, minutes of the June 22nd, emergency city council meeting, and minutes of the June 27th, special city council meeting on the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda. Items B and C.
Okay. Eric, Candy, sorry, I've got to take minutes at the same time. Sorry for being slow. Corrections need to be there. Okay.
The one for the 22nd, the date is wrong. It's listed as June 1S.
Yes.
And then you have Kelly Matula listed and not Kelly Carlson.
Kelly, tell me again, the 22nd?
Yeah. The date is wrong.
On the top of the first page or?
Yeah, the first paragraph.
Okay.
And then, call to order, you have me listed as Kelly Matula.
All right.
June 27th. In the call to order section, you have me listed as Kelly Matula. Again, in the body, you have me listed as Carlson, but other than that, I approve.
So we need to amend that motion?
So we need to follow the, let me think about it. We need to follow the current motion, but we can amend it.
Motion to amend.
Do it backwards.
Yes. Motion to amend, we second it, and then we talk, and then we come back after that's proven the original motion has amended.
That's right.
So I'll make, if you're ready, I'll make a motion to amend.
I second, as per the instructions given by Mr. Carlson.
All right, do we have any further discussion on the motion to amend? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we've got to go back to the original motion.
Accept it as amended. Ready to vote?
We have, sorry, we have Eric made the motion. Andy is the second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys. Okay, moving on. Item five, new business. Consider and take action to approve roadway clearance, pruning, and tree removals in Valley Lodge, Section 1, as recommended and funded by the City of Simonton, EDCB. I've included for reference because the last time council looked at this, we had the bid from Yellowstone and we did not have a second bid. And council wanted to look for that. So the second bid is included in the packet. Yellowstone is still, provides the most service for the least amount of money. They have worked for the city before. They were recommended to us by Fort Bend County Road and Bridge. They're doing lots of contract work that the county cannot manage on their own. So EDCB considered this section of the tree pruning and approved in their meeting to fund it from their budget. So now it comes back to council for final approval for expenditure from the EDCB.
Well, I'd like to make a motion across the board and I think Eric had a good idea on, Councilman Duhon, on a couple of trees that were in there. And since they're low bid, make a motion to approve Yellowstone's bid at $9,810. Is that correct?
Is there a second line on that?
Well, that's what, I just want to make sure I'm saying the number right.
It's all on one page for Yellowstone.
Oh, yeah. I can't move very quick.
Did you say $9,810?
Well, that's their bid, but I thought there was another number. Okay.
That's right.
There was. He hasn't moved, I guess.
Yeah, the roadway clearance.
And the other thing.
With the stop sign, so it would be total, but do we include the city hall or that's a separate?
That is separate. It's a next item on the agenda.
So whatever 9,540 plus 270 is, that's what I recommend.
Okay, that's $9,810.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve Yellowstone for that number for section one.
Okay. Do we have a second? I'll second. Kelly Carlson. Any further discussion on 5A?
Yes. As Councilman Perry mentioned, I had made some comments the last time this was before us and had asked that they include several trees are actually in front of a culvert preventing drainage. And that culvert is on the road.
Wrangler.
Wrangler, it's at the end of Wrangler. I'll see a picture of that or have it included. The trees that you have pictured on the cedar elm and the pecan, that's the only two trees that I think they're addressing, so.
Those are the ones that were added after your request. They went out and added those two specifically when we requested trees that were in the ditch right away.
Okay, so what's not in here is the other three trees that they have to remove in the ditch, in the ditch in front of the culvert.
So you said Wrangler?
Yeah.
That's section two and three.
And Wrangler's one.
There's one at 201 Wrangler that's in section one. If you're talking about a different section, we'll have to address that section.
Let me explain and you'll get a picture. When you come down and you go to my property, which is at that gate, on the right-hand side, there's a culvert and there's trees in it, okay? So that is Wrangler at the end of it where you turn to go on Horseshoe.
Is that 201?
No, it can't be 201. That's way at the end of Wrangler.
You didn't give me any addresses, so I was just asking since that's the one.
Okay, so I'm sorry, it's actually not an address there because that piece of property belongs to the guy that has a huge acreage with some cows and cattle and all.
So I think since we have this estimate for this particular work, I'm not saying that can't be done, but we need to address what's been bid out and then we can do that as an addendum or additional.
Let me make a comment real quick. It's in here. It's the tree removal, if you go to the contract estimate for Yellowstone, 1, 2, 3 paragraphs, that's the tree removal, one pecan lane of roadway located adjacent to 201 Wrangler.
I hear that. It's not it. That 201 Wrangler is when you first come into the subdivision or whatever, you can take our pictures. Which is great is that I appreciate the pictures, by the way. But what I'm talking about, and I don't know, maybe you can drop, Andrew, you drove this area.
I can tell you the address. It's 449 and 433 Wrangler Road, right at the corner of your property.
Right. And that's significant, by the way, because if we're talking about flooding and prevention, those are absolutely blocking a culvert that needs to drain, that whole road, putting all of the drains into my property.
They would be happy to give us a, forward that additional work.
So I guess what I'm saying is, this was asked before and it could have been included because it was asked before and it was, Andrew, I don't think you were here maybe when we talked about adding those pictures.
Yes, as a meeting on.
Yeah, and so.
So the work as described was added, but since we didn't have a specific location, so I guess they must have missed what you had in mind. So we can certainly check on that and see if we can have it.
There's a tree removal.
Bid separately is new. There was no tree removal the first time. All of this is new.
No, that works true.
So we get it for next meeting.
So we want to do two separate things with the same company? I mean, when they're there.
Our choice is to not do this work at all and delay another two weeks or a month or work up, move ahead with the work that the EDC has said they would fund and then come back and say in a couple of weeks or as soon as they get bid for us.
Okay, my issue I'm having is, if I'm going to do this work and I got to bring my crew out twice, you're going to pay for it. If I'm going to do this work and I bring my crew out once, you're going to get a better deal.
I have absolutely no problem talking to them about it and say, "This and this are approved. We need to do an addendum for this so that they can make it in one trip if they want to." But they're also out working for the county quite a bit, so I'm going to let them manage their own schedule, make sure that we tell them what.
Right. The trees aren't going in here, guys. The trees aren't going into air and, you know, you're going to make it through for the next, I don't know, months and months, so.
Well, and the other sections of the neighborhood need work, too. So maybe they swing over there and catch that while they're doing something else.
All I'm saying is, my preference is that this become an accurate and complete section one bid. And now we have a motion and a second. I'm just telling the council, my preference is, we don't do this now and we ask for a rebid and include all trees that need to be removed so that we can have them do it at one time. And I don't care about going section two or three, yes, there's work there, but that's a different bid.
That's correct.
That's it, I'm finished up.
Kristy, you said 449 and 443.
I sent you the screenshot.
Okay.
So you will have it. So yes, it shows 449 through 433 Wrangler Road. So it's right at that bend.
So, yeah, it was coming. So could we amend, I'm just asking a question, amend it to allow you to go up to $1,000, $1,200 more so we take care of it if they, but they'd have to give you the bid for it?
EDC is.
Well, you could be approving the city to pay the balance above, I mean, EDC has approved 8910 if it costs 10.5 or whatever number you select. The city would pay for it and either stays with the city or you petition the EDC to see if they would pick up that extra. It could be amended later.
I can't disagree with Councilmember, but I'd like to get it done while the fruit's hanging low right now, they get a higher cut, and then we can come back and get those trees on another bid. Same section. So I have a motion.
So I like the fact that you're thinking through maybe how to get this done. I don't like the fact that EDC is going to take and have this budgeted item that we're going to throw at them and yet they have what I would say an unapproved true bid that does not complete everything that's needed. I don't want to do that to them.
I don't think you're doing anything to them. They've approved this much.
Yeah, I understand.
If it's more than that, they can say no.
I understand, but it would have to go back to them. It'd have to go back to them.
It doesn't have to go back to them. If the city, either the city pays the difference.
I hear you.
Or the city goes back later and says, "We actually spent $10,200. Would you?" And then they still have the opportunity to say, "No, we don't want to do it from our budget," and it was taken by the city.
So my feeling from history of dealing with contracts and everybody is, you don't get a firm fixed price like this, you're either going to get change orders and it's going to go up, right? And then what we're saying is, there's a budget item that EDC says, "Hey, we'll take it, we'll do it." And I'm going, "Okay, fine." It's locked in, it's there, it's done. Now, what he's saying is, he has a motion or we can amend the motion to say, "Make it higher." And I'm saying, "Does the EDC really want to take on something that's not completed?"
If the EDC is not committed to the extra money, the council is committed to the extra money. If you do it tonight and say, "It's $10,200," whatever the number is, you're not committing the EDC's money.
Okay, I don't want to argue a point too much because we have a motion, we have a second. All I'm saying is, from my perspective, let's make it an accurate, absolute, complete bid for section one, which is absolutely my section one, in one way. And then just get it back. I mean, we have time. We only, we have five more meetings coming.
Yeah, we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have an amendment? We don't have to, but is there an amendment? Okay, so there's no amendment. The motion is to accept the bid from Yellowstone for $9,810, made by Andy, seconded by Kelly. Is there any further discussion? So we just did that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question? So Andy, you did a really great job in doing this. Would you be opposed within the next month or two to do the same thing for section two and three?
I have.
Okay, and so that way, if we ask her a quote for those items, we can then include the little bit that's left over from section one into one more potential quote.
Yeah, they can give us another quote and if we don't like it, we can try to legislate it for next year, too. My biggest comment is, let's do it while they're hanging low so we get a higher cut.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure that you were good with going forward so that way we weren't waiting a long time and we can get the.
The mayor has the map that I sent her.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. What are we missing?
Your seat.
Failed to put a page in there for you. For item B, the item is to consider and take action to approve clearance, pruning, and tree removals at Simonton City Hall as recommended and funded by the City of Simonton, EDCA. And I think we may be missing a page.
We don't have that.
Price and sheet.
We did. So we can use that. So if you look at the table, just the Excel chart, one pager, it looks like this. Now, we'll look at the packet for it. It's right before the Yellowstone page. We have, I can't get the word, estimate, bought from Yellowstone for $1,755. That to include overhanging trimming around light poles, the entrance, and over the building plus the three trees on the west side that are spray painted in yellow and orange out on the side. They're dead or in danger of falling on either our neighbor next door, the abers, or on our new building. The competitive bid was $2,500. EDCA approved funding that item since it's here at city hall and falls within their purview and to fund it from their budget.
So the question I have is, do the EDCs have a budget?
Yes, they do. They sure do.
Because I had conversations before about there was zero balance on fiscal year and there was zero, had been spent quite some time, so you were saying.
That was prior.
Had been fixed.
And it was fixed last year in the October 22nd budget amendment that was made by city council at that time. So the EDCs reviewed their budgets, spent versus, budget versus actual to date, and worked on their planning for the new budget.
I'm sorry, when did you say they fixed it? Last year on the July meeting?
October 22nd.
October.
So the EDCA has recommended this work at city hall, just as a note, the EDCA is also the one that pays the monthly mowing fee here at city hall, $75. We talked about, I think, at last meeting or sometime previous. So activities here at that city hall reside with A and that's why this is separated from the first one.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve the EDC pays $1,755 for trimming around city hall. A lot of reasons I'd brand is so we can start cleaning up our town. Let's start cleaning it up.
Great. All set, Lord. Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, that's unanimous. Item C, consider and take action to approve cleaning of the city hall parking lot. That young man who made the bid, this needs to reconsider. So we'll hold that one over for a future meeting, which takes us to item six, adjourn to an executive closed session. The council will adjourn to the break room so that y'all don't have to stand out in the The city council of the City of Simonton, Texas will convene in a closed executive session on the fifth day of August 2025, beginning at 6:58 PM.
So we did not have a legal consular today?
He can join us by remote. It's not, it's on the agenda. We don't need legal consultation, but he can join us by remote for the item is. All right, thank you, everybody, for staying. The city council of the City of Simonton, Texas ended its closed executive session at 8:14 PM on this fifth day of August 2025. Returning to our agenda. Item eight, consider and take action resulting from executive session. The council has no action to take at this time. Number nine is public information requests. That's for information. We don't really have any reports about that. Emergency management committee met this month. They moved our trailers back from the ESD where they were kind enough to host them for us while we were under construction. They came after work one evening and went and got the trailers, put them into the new garage, moved the pumps over, so all of our major equipment is in one building altogether, maybe for the first time undercover. So that's a great achievement, all thanks to our ARPA grant money and thanks to the committee members doing that. They've made some really good plans for things that they're going to be working on over the next quarter and looking into the next budget year. The grant update, the general land office mitigation grant is moving forward. We've cleared all the hurdles for the first segment, which we call kickoff. The first request for payment came through for some of the preliminary administrative work that has gone with Langford and the ongoing work happening with the environmental studies that are part of this process. Budget workshop one is next week and we'll go on to the other departments to see if we have some other reports.
Real quick, I just want to make everybody know, the budget workshop starts at 6:00 and not 6:30.
And, and a mayor. And, another mayor?
Yes.
The request I had previously about bringing back Langford on, to get the HIJK out, you gonna have that on the 19th?
That's probably for the next year.
All right.
We're at reports, though, so we don't have the city attorney with us today. Keep Simonton beautiful. Any updates?
Um, I, other than we, we're continuing to have our monthly meetings, um, the Christmas roundup is scheduled for December 6. Decorating the city for Christmas is November 16 at 9:00 AM, I think. Um, and we'll send out, um, something via probably Facebook or whatever, asking for volunteers if they want to help us. I can't think of anything else other than to ask a question on behalf of KSB, and that is to ask for another update on the county properties, because we have something that we would like to do on one of them. And then I know the EDCV also has some ideas.
We don't have any update from the county as far as timing goes on those lots, but if we have something that they would like to, um, present or ask the county about, we're happy to see if we can connect that.
Okay, we'll talk about it at our next meetings.
Did you say December?
December 6 is roundup.
6 is the roundup, just capturing the dates. And the 16th.
And November 16th will be decorating.
Great, thank you.
Another mayor?
I'm it.
Give it back up to the city council?
I'll go back to you just one sec. Yep. Anything else for KSB, sorry?
Uh, no, I can, not that I can think of.
Okay.
Other than budget is done and has already been turned in to you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much. By the way. Uh, EDCA and EDCB met this month, you all want to?
Yes, we went over some ideas coming up with for the next year. We reviewed everything and came up with a budget to present to, to the mayor initially in case changes need to be made. Setting it for our next, um, meeting at this time.
Sounds great. EDCA has some projects in the works, so good things to be seen as they do a little more vetting on that. How about EDCB?
Um, actually, I can just say ditto.
Thank you to both of the groups, they have gotten their preliminary budgets complete.
Will we see you at the budget meeting? Sorry. If you'll see our budget at the budget.
Uh, you, yes. And we'll just know that they're preliminary as the calculations come in, but they set the parameters. Yes, is the answer. Okay, city council reports?
So I'd like to report that our, Representative Mayor, at our request, had a Zoom call on Laura, Brazes, River, flooding, planning group, and I posted on the two Simonton sites for the public to be able to see it if they want to go to it. And then you had already posted about the August 28 meeting in Richmond. Other than that, I have a concern, and I'm just gonna share it, but on our calendar events, we're not keeping it posted.
Correct.
It's one of the requirements when we post a meeting, which you posted, I think, also on the website, because the website is one of our absolute areas to post.
Is it posted under agendas? Are you, is it the calendar on the one page you're talking about? Okay, I probably missed doing that.
So for instance, in July, EDC had a meeting on the 22nd. It wasn't, wasn't there at all. And EDCA, EDCA, the 29th, anyway, it's not there at all. So if someone is looking for minutes and or meetings in the public and they're looking at our site, they won't see it, so we need to do a better job.
It's just not on the calendar. It's still there.
It is on the agendas.
I understand.
Point taken about the calendar. Good news, we have a city secretary now who can take over that.
And in August, we had the one on the 5th, that, uh, the council meeting, that we just, today's is not on the calendar. Maybe that's why we're not.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Any other reports or items?
Nope, thank you.
Okay.
Question for the underserved council?
Sure.
So for the budget, I'd like to ask for a tree program for Section 2 and 3. Do you want me to spearhead getting bids for that or?
Um, I don't, I don't necess, unless you have someone you'd like to recommend, if you would, if you'll send me what they have, that way the information or request is made to each company exactly the same way. So they get the same bid.
Yeah, it'd be the same map, but if you need me to put something, yeah, yeah, whoever. This is, if council approves it or not, I don't know if I'd like to request a budget.
All right, Sections 2 and 3. Okay, you got it? Great. All right, council members, anything else? All right, thank you very much. We will adjourn at 8:22.